We're glad you're here.
Call the meeting to the order. Those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes, let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this day, and thank you for the beautiful sunshine, and it's warming up and looking beautiful outside. Lord, we just pray, God, that tonight you can guide and direct us in all that we do and all that we say, and just be with our community, be with our leaders, and just be with our citizens, and Lord, just help us to honor and glorify you in all we do and say, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for coming, and I appreciate you being here. I would like to start things off with citizen participation. And I understand that we have Mr. Spillers here that would like to speak today. Would you please approach the podium, state your name, and you will be given three minutes to speak.
I'm James Spillers, and I just got a short statement. Mostly, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank David Cameron. For those of us who don't know, City Administrator, Karen Hayes, Building Administrator, and Garrett Brinkner, Assistant Building Administrator, for meeting with me and allowing me to present my grievance about street parking in the New Vista subdivision. Even though I wasn't able to achieve my goal, on a more positive note, Mr. Cameron called Chief Sells about an existing parlay arcing violations in the adjacent Oakwood Heights subdivision. At the last city council meeting, Chief Sells found me and discussed the violations and subsequently resolved them. So I'd like to recognize and commend Chief Sells for his work. And I've always been an ardent supporter of the police. I do hope the tax hike in 2021, for additional police and firefighter, took into account the aggressive building, at least from my perspective, of the new apartments in public. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time this evening.
You're welcome.
Any other citizens wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none, I will close citizen participation. We'll move along to the election of our Mayor Pro Tem, an annual April occurrence. I would open the floor for nominations for the Mayor Pro Tem position.
I'll make a nomination.
Mr. Self.
I nominate Councilmember Gerke.
Any other nominations this evening? He nominated Eric Gerke.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say something. I do appreciate Mr. Gerke and everything that Mr. Gerke does here for council. One thing that I do have an issue with on my acceptance of this vote is the fact that I would feel more comfortable voting for a council member that was elected to this position versus appointed to this position.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I understand. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote for Mr. Gerke's appointment to Mayor Pro Tem. I don't think we've never done seconds before for Mayor Pro Tem, have we?
All right. Councilmember Gerke.
Aye.
Councilmember Self.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Councilmember Cool.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
No.
Congratulations, Mr. Gerke. You are elected as Mayor Pro Tem. I hope I stay healthy. Moving on to the consent agenda, I do welcome council members to ask any questions about items one through five on the agenda. Are there any questions or discussion before we entertain a motion and a second for approval of consent? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committee schedule, please note this is a longer list than normal. So, April 18th, city council has been canceled. City council work session on 5:30 PM on May 2nd, 2023. Wait, that doesn't look right.
We're canceling the regular meeting.
But we are doing the work session.
Doing the work session.
Gotcha. Okay. So, how long is the work session going to take?
Seven, 7:30?
All right. So, the regular city council meeting is canceled, but we are doing a work session. I keep on hearing four hours, which concerns me, but I'm not going to get into that. Board of adjustments meeting has been canceled on May 4th, 2023. Planning and zoning meeting on May 8th, 2023, and city council meeting back on May 16th, 2023. Questions? I know that was about as clear as mud. Seeing none. Moving on to old business and tabled items. Item number six on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-12 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 6,912 square feet of unoccupied utility easements in the Republic Storage LLC subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any updates from the city?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 23-12.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will take a roll call vote on our computers. Please click refresh. Cast your vote. Hit submit, and we will tally the votes. Ordinance passes six to zero. Moving on to item number seven on our agenda, this is 23-13. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 23-13 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council amending Bill Number 21-54 by approving amendment of the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 92.85 acres of property located at 3456 South Farm Road 101 from Stone Creek Falls Plan Development District PDD to amended Stone Creek Falls Plan Development District PDD.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city?
No updates.
Any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 23-13, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. Please click refresh, cast your vote, and hit submit. Ordinance passes six to zero. Moving on to new business, specifically number eight on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-14 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 8,443 square feet of unoccupied utility easements at the 3,000 block of East Sawyer Road, VACA 003.
Excellent.
Patrick Ruiz, Associate Planner. The city is requesting vacation of 8,443 square feet of utility easement on City of Republic-owned property at the 3,000 block of East Sawyer Road. This vacation accompanies the decommission of the Brookline South Lift Station, which occupies part of the subject easement. The decommissioned lift station is being removed, and a new lift station is being built on the west edge of the Hankin subdivision. The new lift station will increase the city's overall wastewater service area. Staff is recommending approval of this item.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or discussion from council? Seeing none, please remember, this is a first read, so if you have questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 23-15 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 537 square feet of utility easement owned by Republic 63 LLC at the 3,000 block of East Sawyer Road, VACA 004.
Thank you, ma'am. It's hard. I know. Like, do you stand up there and wait, or do you sit down? It was just like right there in the space long enough. I think you made the right call this time. So, if it gets a little bit longer next time, just kind of slide over and sit down. It'll be fine.
I'm all for efficiency. The city is requesting vacation of 537 square feet of utility easement on property owned by Republic 63 LLC. The vacation coincides with the decommission of the Brookline South Lift Station located directly east of the subject property. A new lift station is being constructed on the subject property and require the acquisition of new utility easements specific to its location to be dedicated to the city during final plating of the subdivision. Staff is recommending approval of this item.
Thank you. Questions from council? Seeing none. Please remember, this is a first read, so get with staff before the next meeting if you have questions. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions, this is item number 10 on our agenda, 23-R-23, a resolution of the city council authorizing the Builds Department to apply for grants through the Ozarks Transportation Organization for the addition of trails and expansion of pedestrian faculties. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-23, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. Wait, Brinkner was up here and then he left, and so like...
Forgot the clicker. I've never used the clicker before, so we'll see how this goes. So, Garrett Brinkner, Assistant Builds Administrator. So, I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about the overall trail plan in the area, and then we'll get to the resolution and how these grants apply into that. So, we're actually going to start here with Shuler Creek Trail. The alignment, as you can see, that blue line up there from where it currently ends today down to Wilson's Creek National Battlefield. And then there's also a section that is unplanned and unfunded, or it's unfunded. It is planned to connect to Owen Park as well. So, the current Shuler Creek Trail extension would be about 1.7 miles, and then that connection to Owen Park is about 3/10 of a mile. So, and then we'll get to the funding of Shuler Creek here in a minute. This next section is from Wilson's Creek National Battlefield up to the high school approximately. So, this is a funded section that's being taken care of by Ozarks Transportation Organization and Ozark Greenways. They're working with MoDOT to get this constructed as part of when the roundabout at ZZ and Elm is constructed. So, these two stretches of trail will both be built. This one's about 1.5 miles, and will allow the high school direct access to a trail that then they could take into the heart of Republic if they wanted to, and connect with the other schools in the district. This purple dash section is a future connection that is unfunded right now. This is about 2.4 miles, but it would connect City of Republic's trail system with the over, with Ozark Greenways regional trail network. They have about 110 miles of regional trails that are connected to this and are planning on expanding up to 200-plus trails. So, once we get connected into that, it's kind of like being on a computer that's hooked up to the internet. You can go a lot more places once that gets done. This section, blue dash line again, it's unfunded at this time. This would take place as part of the MM realignment. That is a future realignment. That is on the unfunded needs list right now, so this would take place at that time. That is about a mile, and like I said, would be timed with the construction of the highway that would go to US 60, which is on MoDOT's plan. It's on Green County's major thoroughfare plan. It's on our major thoroughfare plan. So, that is the plan, is to connect MM to ZZ at the intersection of ZZ and M right now. So, the plan would also be to have a trail that goes along that pathway. Trail along, the new MM section that is funded, this is part of what we're going to be talking about as far as grants tonight. So, the blue dash line is what we're talking about as far as what these grants would be for. The solid blue line is a sidewalk that is already funded through MoDOT as part of the MM realignment project. That'll include sidewalks from Farm Road 160 over the railroad bridge, a connection to our trail, as long as we get these grants to do the underpass and trail, and then sidewalk would continue down to US 60. So, what the grant ask would be for is trail to go on the other side of the road from the sidewalk that would then connect up to a logical termini, cross underneath the, underneath the new five-lane highway as it starts to go up to go over the railroad tracks, cross under that to connect to the sidewalk to allow pedestrians to continue on. There would also be a branch that branches off and goes to the new recreational complex, as well as the future school in that area. And then I'm actually going to go past this one for a second. So, the blue dash line that goes along MM up to Carnahan Street, past James River Freeway, that is what MoDOT would construct as part of their, as part of this section of MM expansion. This is currently unfunded, but it is on their needs list. I would look for this to be planned for somewhere in 2028 or sooner. If we get the raised grant, it'll be much sooner than that. They will include sidewalks all the way up to Carnahan Street regardless of what we do. That is just their plan. But what this would allow us to do is add another about 8/10 of a mile trail section to get to Brookline Park. So, and then we'll just go back to the beginning here. So, that's kind of an overview of this kind of trail corridor and everything going on along there. That's about nine miles of pedestrian access that we just kind of breezed through. Some of that in various stages of being funded, some of that being funded by other agencies other than ourselves. But I just wanted to get this in front of you because I don't think I've ever fully shown like why we're doing each section, or you might have questions about like, well, why are we doing this trail down here? Overall, it is a much bigger part, or it is a part of a much bigger picture to connect all of Republic pedestrian access throughout town. What this allows us to do is you have walkability from every school in the district to every other school in the district, including the new one, which will be built just north of US 60 and the new recreational complex. Connects several parks and connects to the Ozark Greenways other trail network in the area, as well as connects to Wilson's Creek National Battlefield. The existing trail network goes all the way back to Main Street in the center of Republic. So, you could walk from Main Street all the way to Amazon if you wanted to, is the idea. So, that's just kind of a little background on the trails and where we're at with that. So, what this resolution would allow us to do is apply for three separate grants. The first is a MoDOT Sidewalk Cost Share Program grant, which they are on board with. I've already talked with them. What it would allow us to do is build that section from US 60 north to where it connects to their sidewalks. That would be... Yeah. So, MoDOT's estimated the cost of that trail. They would take care of construction. They would build it with the realignment project. They're just asking us for a portion of that. They're asking OTO for a portion of that. So, what that looks like is the cost estimate MoDOT has generated is $855,000 for that section. MoDOT would be responsible for approximately $428,000. OTO would be responsible for about $342,000, and the City of Republic would be responsible for about $85,000 of that. Grant number two that we'll be applying for is part of the Spring Call for Projects through the Transportation Alternatives Program and Carbon Reduction Funding. That is for the underpass that will connect this trail that we're talking about on the new MM alignment under the five-lane highway to connect to MoDOT's sidewalk project to continue that pedestrian access. That way pedestrians aren't having to cross five lanes of traffic to get to the sidewalk on the other side. The cost estimate for that is $292,000. OTO would take 80% of that, and then the City of Republic would be responsible for $58,000. Grant number three that we'll be applying for is what I'm going to call Phase Two of Shuler Creek Trail. So, what that means, it's nothing different than what's already been brought forward. The only thing that changes is the funding. So, to back up a little bit, when we first brought, or when we first applied for Shuler Creek Trail, the original grant we received was for engineering, design, and right-of-way acquisition. It did not include construction. Later, Ozarks Transportation Organization came back to us and said, hey, we have additional funding if you guys would like to start construction. So, total, we received about $866,000 of what came to be a $2.4 million project. And that's where we're at today. So, right now, as it sits today, we have $866,000 in federal funding, and City of Republic is responsible for about $1.5 million to construct that trail. What this request would do is, what we would do is request an additional, just over a million dollars from OTO to continue that construction, which would bring the final distribution to Ozarks Transportation Organization approximately $1.9 million, and City of Republic about $486,000. So, if we were awarded all three of these grants, it would save the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund about $930,000. So, what is bringing brought before you tonight is just authorization to apply for these grants. Once we have, once we know if we've received those grants, any of those grants, we will bring each one of them back for approval, where you guys can approve all of them, approve one of them, approve any combination thereof. So, with that, staff recommends approval to apply for these three grants.
Thank you, sir. Questions from council? Mr. Self.
Garrett, do you know of any one, any other area that's lining up for these grants as well?
I'm sure there will be some. I have...
We have a larger footprint, is why I'm asking. So, I didn't know if there was somebody else, though, that's saying, hey, if this is just kind of... Go ahead.
Sure. So, the transportation alternative program, or plan and carbon reduction funding, those are very specific things. Like, you can't use them for roadways. So, not huge ticket items. There is also quite a bit of money in those programs. I believe we are very competitive, even with other potential grant applicants from other municipalities in the OTO area.
I'm going to start down there and come this way. So, Mr. Updike. Was there any talk by taking the trail down to the Aquatic Center and Middle Road Park?
Not as part of this, but it is something that, on the larger plan, we probably would look at, some kind of connection. I mean, ideally, every park and every school will be connected eventually, but not at this time.
Mr. Gerke. Do you have timeframe on when we hear back, and if we heard back and it approved, when things would start?
Sure. So, the applications are due in June. It goes to the Executive Committee in July. So, we would know pretty quickly after that as far as if we receive these or not. Then we'll bring them back to council for approval, acceptance of them via ordinance. After that, the MoDOT projects will take place, or the projects that go along with the MoDOT projects will go along with the MM realignment, which is currently scheduled to start construction in August of '24. Shuler Creek Trail, we'll just keep rolling with what we're doing. We currently are in right-of-way acquisition right now. As soon as we have the right-of-way we need acquired, we will move into construction on that project.
Thanks. Mr. Franklin.
It's still my question.
Oh. Any other questions? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call... Somebody blocked this procedurally. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Administrator Andrew Nelson. I want to point out just real quick what Garrett won't say that he did here. So, to sum all of that up, we are paying less for more trail than we initially had. That, the way he put that all together, makes us even more competitive. So, we have a project that's already funded. We're already obligated for, and somehow we've partnered it with three other applications to say, we'll do more with less of our own money, but it makes us more competitive. So, I just want to point that out. That's a, it's a finesse move here.
He did a Tom Sawyer, got everybody else to paint our fence for us.
That's right.
All right. I got it. Sorry for the reference.
That's all right. Is it, will this be available for the public to look at, or we're working?
This is not up anywhere, but we can post it if, yeah, we can put it on the website.
All right. Can I call for a resolution now, Andrew? Thank you. Hey, Brinkner, well done. Seriously.
Thank you.
As this is a resolution, we can call immediately for a vote. That is what I will do. All those in favor of 23-R-23, please vote. Aye? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes six to zero. Moving on to item number 11 on our agenda, this is 23-R-24, a resolution of the city council authorizing execution of an agreement with TLG Leasing, Inc. for the lease of dump truck vehicles. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 23-R-24.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Good evening.
Good evening. Karen Haynes, Builds Administrator. The Builds Department is requesting authorization to execute a lease agreement with PAC Lease for four different dump trucks. These include three tandem axle dump trucks and one single axle dump truck. The Builds Department requested proposals for a full-service truck lease, receiving one qualified submittal from PAC Lease and one unqualified submittal this last month. The RFP required the lease contract provide all routine maintenance and repairs on the trucks, except for tires, for a full seven-year period. The trucks also needed to be able to accept our current snowplow implements in order to take care of snowplowing in the winter. We also requested an option to include in the contract a buy option at any point during that seven-year period. So, the total cost for the single axle dump truck is right around $3,115 per month, for a total cost over the seven-year period of $261,660. The tandem axle dump trucks ring in at $3,665 per month for a seven-year total of $307,860. In review of our current needs and during the actual RFQ and submittal review process, we did determine the costs associated with owning, maintaining, and repairing dump trucks does not align with our current budget constraints or current project needs. During 2022, we spent excess of about $48,000 on routine maintenance and repairs of our aging fleet currently, which includes seven dump trucks. They range in age from 29 years old to 16 years old, and we have two that are six and nine years old. So, for comparison, we did look at the actual total purchase price. For a single axle, it was right around $206,000, and at about $238,000 for the tandem, plus the associated cost with financing those vehicles. We are recommending approval of the lease agreement. And to clarify also, these trucks will be utilized by the Builds Department across our water, wastewater, and streets divisions.
Questions from council? Mr. Franklin.
So, I'm just kind of assuming if normal, not non-normal wear and tear, if you were to have an accident or something, is that covered by insurance that we carry on the...
Yes. Our insurance requirements would be the same, or very similar, regardless of whether we own them or lease them. So, we are responsible for insurance.
I assume, but thank you.
Mr. Updike. Was there any talk or looking into purchasing used dump trucks that were still in good condition instead of going purchasing two new ones?
Yeah, we have purchased used trucks in the past. In fact, we own three former Green County dump trucks. And we do get a fairly good bargain when those do go on the market, but the lifespan of those trucks is short because they already have a lot of miles and wear and tear on them. So, we've made do with that option in the past. But for our current project needs and the age of our current fleet, we do believe the leasing option is optimal.
Mr. Wilson.
Okay. You get these four dump trucks. Will you keep what you got or sell?
It is likely that we'll evaluate that in January of 2024. That is going to be the expected ship date for all four of these trucks. We will likely probably try to sell... We will likely probably try to sell our oldest dump trucks, or the ones that are in the worst condition at that time.
What's our mileage allowed on? Are we kind of unlimited mileage, what we need to use them? Is it covered?
I, that's a very good question. I believe it is.
Yeah. We don't, being in the city, we don't put a lot of miles on stuff. It's mostly hours. On the schedule A's of each one of these, it does have the limits, but we're, we're...
Well, within the guidance, even on a record snow or something that...
Yeah.
Or even in that circuit, I guess there would be a way to, for us to pay extra if we had to.
Yeah, we don't really drive outside of our jurisdiction often, except to pick up materials. So our typical mileage for any particular project is not a lot.
Pretty short. Sure.
Mr. Updike?
Will these be retrofitted for snowplows and what other, other city uses?
Yes. One of the requirements for these vehicles is, they had to fit our current implements. So all of our current attachments for snow plowing are compatible with these trucks. And that was one, that was a, a big requirement, frankly.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just to answer the council member Franklin's question, so the maximum mileage on these is twenty-seven thousand five hundred miles for each twelve-month period, so.
Okay, per year.
Probably way higher.
Yeah.
And there's also max engine hours, which is also way higher. Siding is thirty-five.
On the hours?
It's a calculation, you divide it by thirty-five, but.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? We're really interested in dump trucks.
They're very interesting. They do a lot of work.
I've never bought a dump truck. Are these good dump trucks?
I think so. I've never bought a dump truck either, but...
This is exciting for us all.
They do come highly recommend, they do come highly recommended. We do believe that the Peterbilt dump trucks probably are one of the best options on the market for the type of work that we do.
You did say something that I was curious about. If, you can't answer it, I understand. You said you had one qualified bid and one unqualified bid?
Yes, the unqualified bid, they did not want to honor the seven-year commitment. So that was one of the requirements for what we were looking for.
And that's what made them unqualified, didn't fit what we needed?
They, yes. They did not fit what we needed.
Oh, Mr. Wilson?
In today's world, I guess they're, all four will be automatics.
Yes. I don't know that, yes. I don't know that anybody drives a standard dump truck, or a standard period anymore. I think we do have one that may be a standard, though.
They used to be.
Very good question.
I, I saw it. I felt it.
I just want to talk in the microphone.
Set the timer, Chris.
Will we be able to logo the vehicles with our stick, with our insignia on the vehicles? Just so this community knows that it's us?
It's a Builds, yes.
And it's not green?
No, they're not green. They will have our Builds logo on the side.
Can we tilt it straight?
No.
I don't know. Maybe too late for that.
All right, we're done with this. As this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what we will do. All those in favor of twenty-three dash R dash twenty-four, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes six to zero. Moving on to item number twelve on our agenda, this is twenty-three dash R dash twenty-five, a resolution of the City Council approving a preliminary plat for Oakwood Heights Second Edition, a residential subdivision consisting of approximately two-point-nine-seven acres located at six-oh-two North Oakwood Avenue. I need a motion and a second for, to take up resolution twenty-three dash R dash twenty-five, please.
Motion.
Second.
Good evening.
The applicant Little Apple LLC is requesting approval of a preliminary plat for the Second Edition of Oakwood Heights Subdivision to be located at six-oh-two North Oakwood Avenue. The preliminary plat consists of three lots, zone multifamily residential, and will include new streets, sidewalks, and infrastructure. One street connection will be made to Williams Avenue, ending in a cul-de-sac. Sidewalk is planned along the entirety of Williams Avenue, as well as along the north side of Heinz Street. The water main will loop into the greater system by coming south along the east side of Williams and making connection along the north side of Heinz. Sewer will be extended south on Williams and Turner to serve the new development. Detention basins in Oakwood Heights and New Vista will be utilized and have been designed to account for the added impervious surface created by the development. The exact design of street, sidewalks, water, sanitary sewer systems, and stormwater detention will be reviewed and permitted during the infrastructure permitting process, which is expected to follow if this is approved by council. Staff considers the proposed preliminary plat in general conformity with the requirements for plats and is recommending approval of the application.
Questions from council. This did not get the interest of the dump trucks, did it? Better luck next time. Still seeing no questions. As this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what we will do. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All those in favor of twenty-three dash R dash twenty-five, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Resolution passes five to zero to one. Moving on to item number thirteen on our agenda, this is twenty-three dash R dash twenty-six, a resolution of the City Council authorizing execution of a Phase Two Contract Price Amendment with Burns and McDonald Engineering Co., Inc. for the wastewater treatment plant blending project. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-three dash R dash twenty-six, please.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Brinkner?
Good evening. The city previously executed a Phase One Design Build Contract with Burns McDonald for the wastewater treatment plant in February of last year, which included engineering design for the project, and the target project price for that was fifteen million dollars. So we've gone through the design now, and we're bringing the Phase Two contract tonight. The purpose of the wastewater treatment plant blending project is for regulatory, regulatory compliance for wet weather flows, in which we are currently in an administrative order on consent with Missouri Department of Natural Resources, which expires in April of twenty-twenty-five. Currently, during wet weather events, excess influent arrives at the wastewater treatment plant at a volume that is greater than the plant can handle. This is diverted to the stormwater clarifier, which is number two up there on the existing alignment up there. And then, once that fills up, it spills over into what is known as Outfall Two, which is, goes directly into the creek. So the Phase Two contract includes, so what blending does is allow us to pump that back into the, the actual treatment train. We, we bypass some of the primary treatment and go directly into filtration and then disinfection. We still have to meet all nutrient requirements of the state, so the water that comes out will still be as clean as required as part of our NPDES permit and the permit for the plant. The contract price came in at fifteen million three hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, and is to be completed with five hundred and ten calendar days after the date of commencement of the contract, which will meet the timeframe that we have to have Outfall Two eliminated for the AOC. The contract also includes additional provisions for allowances for unforeseen conditions, including unsuitable soils, rock excavation, precast sealers, SCADA upgrades that may be required, temporary alum injection that may be required to heat, to meet nutrient criteria, and road repairs with an estimated total of three hundred and ten thousand across all allowances. The work associated with the blending project is budgeted and approved under the Master Services Contract with Burns McDonald for wastewater system improvements, and staff is recommending approval.
Questions from council. How many phases do we have? This is Phase Two. Do we have, is it?
So each contract has Phase One, which is like design and engineering, and then Phase Two is the actual construction part of the design-build contracts. So...
Don't feel bad if you want to laugh at me, because he did. I heard him laugh when I asked that question. So you can laugh at me for asking a dumb question.
No, it does feel like we bring wastewater stuff to you a lot, so understandable.
Other questions from council? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do. All those in favor of twenty-three dash R dash twenty-six, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes six to zero. Moving on to twenty-three dash R dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the City Council authorizing execution of a Phase Two Contract Price, I'm seeing a theme here. Phase Two Contract Price Amendment with Burns and McDonald Engineering Co., Inc. for Capital Improvement Project Number Seven, CIP Number Seven. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-three dash R dash twenty-seven, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Hi.
Final wastewater item for the evening. We are requesting authorization for the city administrator to enter into a contract with Burns McDonald for Phase Two services associated with CIP Project Number Seven. The city executed a Phase One Design Contract with Burns and Mac in February of twenty-twenty-two, which included the initial engineering design for the McLaheny Lift Station upgrades and also the force main project. The target price was originally five million seven hundred and fifty thousand. The Phase Two Contract includes completion of the engineering design services, purchasing of all materials and equipment, and the actual construction of the improvement for a total contract price of five million nine hundred and ninety-three thousand three hundred. This is to be completed within five hundred and ninety-six calendar days from the date of commencement. This contract also does include allowances that are not included in the original contract price of approximately one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. This would be for unforeseen circumstances, MODOT and Green County permitting and coordination, restoration of landowners' areas, and then additional asphalt repair as part of this project. The work associated with CIP Number Seven is budgeted, and it was approved under the Master Services Contract with Burns McDonald for wastewater system improvements, and staff is recommending approval of this resolution.
Thank you. Questions from council? I know. He's gotten his one-time talking.
Just want to make the council aware.
Can't stop him.
The portion of the force main that's, you see, bend across ZZ Highway, that actually recently broke for the third or fourth time since I've been employed at the City of Republic. Every time that happens, there's a group of residents there, we're testing their wells, that we've added treatment to their well. So that needs to be done. We're looking forward to addressing it. That was a destruction method, when that was installed, probably less than.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Questions from council? I've skipped over, no, no, I, I've skipped over, yeah. Go ahead. Mr. Franklin, you're going to get to go, because I don't want you to lose your questions.
I'm, I'm just curious. See, I'm looking at the depth on this, you know, everywhere from, like, sixteen foot was what I saw down to the depth. When, when a high-pressure main like that breaks at sixteen foot down, how long does it take before someone notices? Is it something, pressure in the system, you can pretty well tell immediately, or does it take a little while?
The last break a couple of weeks ago, it was very obvious, kind of in the right-of-way, right there at the corner. So we had a report. It, it got called in. We immediately dispatched our crews. I think I actually wrote a little report in the administrative report regarding that particular incident. It was on a Saturday afternoon. I think they arrived about three, and about midnight, they had it repaired. But it does take time. It is dangerous work. It does require turning off the lift station. We also turned off the lift stations that feed into McLaheny to reduce that flow so they could actually do that work.
This is very impressive. Sixteen, yeah. I've, I've seen the, I drove through there Saturday night and saw it, working on it, and it's curious, but yeah, that's, that's very impressive.
Mr. Updike, you had a question?
I'd, no, I'm, I'm good.
Very good.
I, I, I take it back.
Very good. Any other questions? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor of twenty-three dash R dash twenty-seven, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries six to zero. Final resolution of the evening, number fifteen, this is twenty-three dash R dash twenty-eight, a resolution of the City Council awarding the bid for a portion of the city's twenty-twenty-three paving, overlays, improvements to intersections of Heinz and Lynn, and full-depth asphalt of the school storage lane. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty-three dash R dash twenty-eight, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Brinkner?
Good evening. So the city requested bids for three different projects at the same time. The idea behind that was, hopefully, we'll get one contractor who wants to do everything for the city and will give us a better price. That did not happen. They each special, they each have their own little specialty. So we did talk to them in a pre-bid meeting and at the actual bid opening about this process, and they, the conclusion they came to was, it really doesn't save them a ton of money other than a little bit on mobilization costs. So everything else is still essentially the same cost. So we did end up with three different construction companies doing these three different projects. So I'll go through the first two real quick. Heinz and Lynn Intersection Improvement, which is a roundabout, that will be constructed over the summer. That was a, that, J.D. Wallace Construction was the low bid on that one at five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And this will be paid for out of the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund. APAC was the lowest bid for the full-depth asphalt for the school storage lane on North Main Street at two-hundred-and-eighty, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. This will initially be paid by, eh, or, excuse me, paid for by the Street Department Capital Projects Fund and will be reimbursed by Republic Schools, as per the developer agreement previously approved at council. And then Blevins Asphalt was the lowest bidder on overlays at seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents per ton of asphalt and two dollars and forty cents per square yard of milling. So what the overlays will be for this year are what you see on the screen. We're doing, originally, there were priorities in them. We were going to drop some off if we didn't, if the bids didn't come in under a certain threshold. So priorities one, two, and three. But fortunately, the bids came in at a good price, and we believe we can do all of this. So we're going to do the rest of downtown that wasn't done as part of previous overlays or microsealing, with the exception of Elm Street. Elm Street will be completed by the contractor that is going to do CIP Three. So CIP Three, another wastewater project, is going to tear up a good chunk of Elm Street and West Street, and that contractor will replace that pavement at that time, once they're complete. The other ones are just the next ones in line on the overlay, on the overlay plan that we look at. So we look at it annually, as far as like which streets are in the worst shape and how much traffic they get. So Lynn Avenue may not be as bad as some of the interior corridor streets, but it does get a lot more traffic on it, and it is in pretty rough shape. So we're going to do Lynn Avenue from Miller Roads south down to, where it transitions into new pavement at Schuler, Schuler Ridge subdivision. So that's the plan. I do want to highlight, so similar to last year, where we had island green on there, it's kind of out in, it seems like it's out away from everything, like, why are we doing that? The reason is because it's going to cost us more in the future if we don't do something now. That's what Farm Road one fifty is. It is in very rough shape. It is part of our network, even though it is sandwiched between Farm Road one fifteen, which is Green County, and then Farm Road one fifty to the east is also Green County. So it's just a little section of ours that's way out nowhere. No one's paid it any attention for a long time, and it's in very rough shape. So that's why that's on there, and I just wanted to point that out as well. What we will also be doing is College Avenue and Berry Street are going to get paved. So no more dirt roads in town. We will be all paved at that point. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is Farm Road one fifty out by like Miller, is that Miller, is that like Bustle Built Homes? What is that, Miller Crossing, or?
No, Farm Road one fifty is, so Farm Road one fifteen meets sixty out by like the storage units, Briarwood, if you got, if you're familiar with where that is, if you go north on that, it's, it's way out in what was formerly the Village of Brookline. It's part of what was annexed into the city at that time. So.
It's a, it's a cross from like Springfield Farms, up and to the right?
Is that the subdivision next to it? I'm unfamiliar with the subdivision, but yeah.
Other questions? How's this fit with the, the twenty-year plan? Like, are, are we, are we chipping away at things faster than we were hoping? Or is it, we're on pace? Are you pleased?
We're, we're chipping away. I'm probably never pleased, because...
You want it all done now?
I think it should be a ten-year plan, but with the money we have, the other projects that are going on, I mean, we're doing Heinz and Lynn Intersection Improvement this year as well. We're, we're helping the school out. We're getting traffic off Main Street with that, so I'm pleased with the plan that we're presenting tonight.
Okay. Mr. Updike?
So the roundabout at Lynn and Heinz will start after school ends and will be done bef-
before school starts.
Yep.
And they... They've stressed this enough to them that it needs to be done before?
Yes, that was in the... That was in the bid when it went out. There are liquidated damages that apply if they don't meet that deadline. It was stressed again in the pre-bid meeting and at the bid opening. The contractor, JD Wallace Construction, is confident they can meet that deadline.
Is that for all the projects? Is that a timeframe for all the projects, or just that one?
So, the timeframe for the school storage lane and Heinz and Lynn Roundabout will be before school starts again in the fall. The rest of them, we will kind of go... They will most likely get done this summer, but we will work with the contractor as far as when they are able to get to us. But the timeframe for the overlays is end of this year.
I just want to thank you and everyone in your department, because there has been a lot of stress applied with the growing community, and so there's a lot of... A lot of levers or dials, or however you want to put it, with the influx of traffic. And so, I know that this is not an easy thing to do to prioritize, so, but I do thank everyone in your department, so.
Thank you. Like I said, I would love to do all of them, but gotta stay in budget, so.
Mr. Updike.
Just to follow up, what road... What... How big of the area will be closed off while it's being done?
At Heinz and Lynn?
Yeah.
The intersection will be closed.
I mean, so you can't come, you know, so it'll be closed a little bit wider than just the intersection?
Yes, the... If you're asking, like, you'll be able to get into Walgreens, we'll make sure there's access to any homes that are right there, but like, if you're going westbound on Heinz trying to get to 60, you won't be able to get through. And northbound on Lynn, you won't be able to get through. We'll set up detours.
Sounds like Kyle and Logan's about to get...
Yeah, well, they're on the plan for next year, so.
All right. As this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor of twenty-three dash R dash twenty-eight, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes six to zero. Mr. Camlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been waiting to hit that button all night. I'm pretty impressed with the conversation tonight, and I did not even talk about wastewater, so great job to the staff. Mary Cromery, it's great to see you here tonight. I gave you a hard time when you were walking in, but if you don't know Mary, Ozark Greenways is like, I would say that she is the regional leader of everything trails, incredible advocate, fights very hard, very passionate about it, but what she's been able to do, and if we could just continue this momentum collectively and help her effort, I know the OTO has gotten involved, we're proud to be a part of that, part of that discussion to help, but I commend you for staying the fight, because we're here to help you in that effort, but for one person, I know you have a board and a group of people that are very passionate about it, but I commend you for seeing what's happened in a neighboring state and wanting that so badly for your own state, just your passion for it and your commitment to it, even when maybe some people weren't listening as much. But I do thank you that we get to be a part of it, and I thank the staff and the OTO for going after these grants and trying to figure out a way, and yes, Garrett for figuring out a way to make it a little less, a little less complicated. I also want to congratulate the builds department for... They're moving into their new building this week, so if you're calling City Hall and you're looking for Karen and her team, they are moving and transitioning to, what is it, thirty thousand square feet?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, we're going to call it thirty, evangelistically speaking. But I would encourage you before, you know, in the transition, we're going to be having an event coming up for the council and the community to see the building, but I think it's very important that at some point you go see the building they were in before, just so that you have an optic as to what before and after, and I think it speaks to your commitment as a council, as this community's commitment to making sure that, you know, having dump trucks. I think it gets overlooked so many times, what, how Republic has grown was kind of through the backs of the Public Works crews building infrastructure that created opportunities at Amazon and Garton Business Park, and so having this facility and the equipment to do the job has been, has come through this body. But I want to just commend the staff, from Andrew, from the vision to help get it done, like, it was one of his passions when he started. Garrett, Karen, Chris, I saw your team out there today, getting all the IT set up for the facility. I was only there for a few seconds, because it's hard to look at when there's windows in people's offices, you know, it's like, we're all wanting one. But I commend you for the work that you're doing, and Karen, to lead that effort to transition all that work, right, and the height of all the development and things that we've got going on, to transition that speaks volumes to your leadership and that of your team, but I'm looking forward for everyone getting to go out and celebrate the opening of that event. Also, last week, I'm trying to think, did we take fourteen people to the Think Summit? There were thirteen or fourteen of our employees, and Councilmember Franklin, thank you for attending as well. We had a great time at the Think Summit, had a chance to speak. Always enjoy the opportunity when I get to speak at Think Summit. We talked about regionalism this time, or part, my guess, my take of it was on regionalism. I'm a big fan of it, just like it is the regional trail system. I think we can do so much more collectively than we can as individual cities, and the day that we ever realize how much we can leverage collectively, we'll begin to make even further progress than each individual city working as individuals, and it's not that we don't collectively work together, I don't want to give that impression, or that I'm the first person that's ever talked about regionalism, but there is an opportunity for us to work collectively together with an overall brand and vision and direction for the region, to leverage our resources, so when we're leveraging of where we should spend transportation dollars, when you see that they're talking about spending eight-hundred million dollars on I-70 in St. Louis, I think that we should have a stronger presence lobbying for I-44 in southwest Missouri. We are the fastest-growing region in the state right now by census data, and so just want to bring that part up. And then, lastly, I keep mentioning these admin reports to you, we have definitely changed them drastically, but there's one part in here that I want to draw your attention to, and the reason why I'm drawing your attention to it, because it's just full transparency, is there's a portion there where in the last three weeks, I think we've had three Sunshine Law requests associated with me, and how much money I make for the city, what my benefits are, the projects we've done, and just asking for the accuracy of that. And so, what we're doing in these admin reports is I include that information there, then anyone from the community, any employee, all of that is provided to you, so you can find links to these things that are available. It's not something that we hide or suppress, it's something that's a matter of public record, but I just think it showcases what we're trying to do, but the other thing about it is, is that one of the requests was for a validation or an accounting of all the growth and development that's taken place in the city, and so I think it's probably... If Mayor Russell and I have intense fellowship on any particular topic, it's the fact that we don't probably...
What intense fellowship? Fights?
They're not fights, they're just intense fellowship.
Strong disagreements?
It's just... So, it's over what we don't share when it comes to the things, the projects that the community has done, or how much our revenue has grown, our net cash position. I just think, I believe that we do our job, and we were taken care of by that, and I think when you see the results in the audit, and so I think that we, in pulling this information together, which you can find every project we've done, I believe it was somewhere just north or north of one-point-two billion dollars, our net cash position's grown by eighty-five percent, and so adding all this together over a six-year period, there's just a lot of stuff that I... I wanted to appreciate the value of sharing it, but when you start seeing it on paper, and how much, how much we've tried to advance the community, but I just also want to showcase that these reports are for your benefit, and they're for the community's benefit, and I don't set my salary, I do not negotiate those terms, the mayor could validate this, I just show up and do my job, and so, and I leave that decision up to this body, but how we run the day-to-day is up to me, and I appreciate the fact that I'm given the latitude and the leverage to do that. I think the results speak for themselves, and I do believe that it's... We have so much more to do that we can't even include in the list, and I feel like that sometimes we can embellish it, and we've just done the best we can just to make it as conservative as we can, but at the same time, get the information to the media and to anyone that would ask of us, but I do believe that there was value in sitting down and looking at it and saying, you know what, for our team, look at it, you'll see a very large change in the cash position of the city, which we've had a front-row seat to for the last six or seven years. But these reports are not just written to, like, work around something, they're there for everyone to read, and you can see what we're doing in the community. If you miss it, it's online, this will be online for anyone that looks to look at it, and everything we've submitted to Color Ten, you can review that information as well, but it'll be on there tomorrow, correct? But with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Reports from council. Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say congratulations to our new Murray Pro Tem, Eric. If you're from Ward One, your name's Eric, you've got to be a good guy, so congratulations. But I wanted to highlight again on the builds building, I had an opportunity to go over there last week, and that's an incredible building, just walking through there, I know what you guys have been through, I know what you've had, I know what the people that work here deal with, and to see all of that in one place is really impressive. So, I appreciate all of the passion that Garrett, Karen, all of you are showing out there, it's really impressive, and I get to walk through there, and I get to see in action, I get to see the wise decisions that have been made. I've worked on a lot of government buildings, a lot of them, I've worked on city halls, fire departments, police departments, and as an electrician, one of the common things I do is install light fixtures that are the equivalent to cars. Basically, if you can think of the price of a car hanging from a ceiling, that's what I get to do. I didn't get to see that there, and I'm very thankful for that. There was one gigantic fan, and I'll leave the name out, but that building is very impressive, I'm very excited for you guys, and it was a pleasure walking through there, I really appreciate you showing me around, and I can't wait for our tour, because that's going to be very exciting, especially for me, but, and I know for you, so I love that excitement. The only other thing I wanted to say was, got to go to the Think Summit, my favorite part was the very beginning. It's like he took my playlist, and here comes my city administrator, and Republic is rocketing onstage, and so that was awesome, I loved it. But I appreciate what you're doing, especially on that regional message, and helping out our neighbors and letting them know what we're doing here in Republic, so really appreciate that, and I really enjoyed that. Enjoyed visiting with everyone else that was there as well, so just a blanket thank you to everyone, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Well, I'll get the last word, and I'll try to get us out of here quick, but I'm going to expand a little bit on what David said. Today, I ran into somebody, and they were asked, what do you do? I'm the mayor of Republic. Why would you do that? I mean, literally, that was his reaction, like, why would you want to... Do you even get paid for that? Well, no, not kind of, not really. But that's the conversation, but what the story was that I got to tell was, the reason I love doing this, and I think the reason we all love doing this, is we're a part of something special, and David's sitting up here incredibly humble, but take a step back and think about it for a second, one-point-two billion dollars of investment inside our city limits, three thousand jobs, seven hundred and fifty million a year to Jeff City from our revenue that we're sending up there.
Let me clarify that.
Go ahead.
It's twenty million, it's seven hundred and fifty million to the region.
Sorry, my apologies. I don't have all the numbers memorized like he does. My point to this is, that would all go under the radar, because you guys are just showing up and doing your jobs. It's my job to make sure that we push that information out there, to say, this is a priority, and this is what we need to be telling our citizens, that you're doing a good job. We need to tell the region, we're doing a good job, because you are, and they need to know, and I appreciate the humility that you approach this with, but sir, some things deserve to be known, and that is one. So, that is why I fight with him about that, because he's doing a good job and he should be known for it. So, with that, guys, it's my favorite time of year, it's springtime, leaves are coming back out, my wife is about seven days away from being done with tax season, so I get to see her again, I'm excited about that, and I hope you all have wonderful spring plans and getting ready for a busy summer, because...